Try it again. Good evening, everyone. Got a thumbs up from the A B crew. Can anyone hear me? Getting a few people looking this way, getting some smiles and some hand waves, so thank you. I want to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, July 11th, 2022. The first item on the agenda is the roll call, so look to staff, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Abou Ali.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Migala.
I'm here.
Commissioner Valdez.
Present.
And Chairman Cox.
Present.
We do have a court.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the June 6th, 2022 session of this commission. Is there any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Abou Ali.
Yes.
Commissioner Migala.
Epstein.
Commissioner Valdez.
Yes.
And Chairman Cox.
Yes.
The minutes are approved for 01.
All right, thank you. Moving along, item D is the Chairman's opening statement. This is my opportunity to welcome each of you here in the audience. Got a good number here tonight, so that's definitely exciting. Can't believe we're past the halfway point for the year as we're at July of 2022 already. And as always, that welcome goes to my fellow commissioners and those of you watching remotely as well. This is the regular meeting for July, but we are a week later with Independence Day taking the first Monday of the month. Before we go through the brief overview of the petitions, just wanted to share a quick story. Our former chairperson, Bob Silvestram, quite often shared stories of people seeing him when he was out and about and while he was recognized. And that happened to me over the week, and it's happened a couple of times since I've been on the commission. This particular gentleman was out on Randall Road where I was doing some shopping, and we received a word of thanks for our volunteer service to the community. So I wanted to pass this along to Nancy, Karen, Stephen, and Berto. It's a little bit maybe cheesy or whatever, but it truly is a feel-good thing. So I wanted to say thank you to all of you. What we do is appreciated. It's a lot of volunteer hours, a lot of time. What do we have, 326 pages in our board pack tonight? And I know to go through that takes a fair amount of time if we want to be as thorough as we should be. We've got five petitions on the agenda tonight, and since we can hear about each of those going along, just wanted to give a brief overview on the commission and what our goals are for tonight. So just to kind of go through the procedure, we're going to start each petition, looking to city staff for initial comments, introductions, and the city's petition on each of these, I'm sorry, city's position on each of these petitions. We will take the opportunity, then, as a commission, to ask questions of staff. We will then open each of these petitions up to the petitioner teams. You can come on up to the lectern at that point and tell us your thoughts, and then we will again take the opportunity, as a commission, to ask questions to each of those teams. Following that, we open the petitions up to public comment. So those of you here tonight who would like to speak on a particular petition can come on up and tell us your thoughts. There are signup sheets over on the table. If you sign up on there, that's helpful, but if not, we will entertain anyone who's willing to come on up and tell us your thoughts to do so. Following that, we close the public hearing portion of each of these petitions. We usually look to city staff for any final comments, and then we deliberate and take a vote on these petitions. We pass these recommendations on to city councils, since this is a recommending body. And following each of these petitions, there's usually a couple of dates where they will be heard in front of the city council, and those of you on the petitioner teams can work with staff to find out what those dates are. So again, tonight, we open and close the public hearing portion of these petitions, so if you've got something you want to get out on the record or questions you want to ask, tonight is the night for that. All right, so we can move on to the next item, which is not on the agenda tonight, but I know we need to do is, oh, you know, it got bumped down. It's item F, so we're going to go to that now, though, administering the oath to persons desiring to testify. No?
For the first case, we don't, actually, we can do that, but we don't have to do the legal notice and all that stuff for the preliminary and final plot.
Okay.
We can do no deal, for sure, yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. So it was item F intentionally, but all right, those of you who would be testifying tonight, if you could please stand and face the court reporter and take that oath, please. Again, if you even think, if you even think you might, please, please go ahead and do it.
Can I raise your hands, please? You sound like you're a testimony or a call. I'll do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So I understand a little different procedure tonight on this first item E, so we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. And yes, for the record, this is an application for preliminary and final plot of subdivision, so the notices were not provided for that. So this first item is the application by A B C P Investments LLC as the applicant and property owner, requesting approval of the preliminary and final plot of subdivision to re-subdivide approximately 10.4 acres of land located north and east of Mason Road and Capital Street intersection. So as we usually do, we'll start with the aerial map of the subject property outlined here in yellow. The 10.4 acres are currently vacant. They, as you can see, the properties to the south and to the west, and for that matter, across 90 to the north, and then across Randall to the east, generally have the same color, which means they are in the same zoning district, that is, P O R I, Planned Office Research Industrial. The properties to the west are improved with a three-story hotel, handled with suites. There is also a three-story skilled nursing facility, and then a one-story office building. To the south is a two-story office building with multiple tenants. To the north, across 90, is the Randall Rose Auto Mall, the Honda dealership directly to the north. And then across Randall is the Office Park, the Long Point Boulevard. So back in 2016, the city received an application for the annexation of the property that is outlined here with the number 3, that is to be known as 2530 Mason Road. And that portion of the subject property remains unincorporated. The portion south of Mason Road, the numbers 1 and 2, that portion of land is already in the city that is part of the former Capital Corporate subdivision. So back in 2016, the city received an application to annex that the land north of Mason Road, along with the request to establish zoning classification for that property, to amend the zoning ordinance regarding the special area of special character for signage, and also to establish special regulations for a specific sign on that property along I-90. At that time, the city approved the annexation agreement, and that was executed. However, the city did not fully annex the property. So that final part of that application would be done in conjunction with this preliminary and final plot request. So the city would annex that property, would zone it into P O R I zoning district that matches the remainder of the subject property. The city would also amend the zoning ordinance regarding the area of special character, as well as adopt an ordinance regarding the special regulation for signage. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed that application 2016 in March of 2016 and provided unanimous recommendation for approval. So the applicant is now requesting to essentially re-subdivide the subject property to create three larger lots, lots 1, 2, and 3, as indicated here on the slide. And here is the proposed subdivision, Lot 1, that's on the south end, would be 2.2 acres in size. Lot 2, the middle one, would be the largest, 5.7 acres. And then Lot 3, essentially would constitute that land north of Mason Road, that is 2.5 acres in size. The applicant is not proposing any development at this time, although we understand that there may be a potential development coming in the future on the far south, Lot 1, which would be the development of a hotel, hopefully, in the near future. There are no standards for approval, so with that, staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Since this one was above the oath, do we follow the typical procedure with the petitioner team? Okay, all right. So just wanted to make sure we keep everything orderly. So at this point in time, we'll invite the petitioner team to, you know what, I'm sorry, I'm skipping myself here. Got questions for staff from the commission. Commissioner Abou Ali.
No questions.
Commissioner Jones.
Nothing, thanks.
Commissioner Migala.
None.
Commissioner Valdez.
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you either. All right, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up. If you could state your name, spell it, give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts.
Michael Anderson, and the address is 1250 Larkin Avenue, Suite 200. And I am one of the owners of A B C P Investments LLC. And as Damari indicated, what we're trying to do is just clean this up. If you, and Damari, if you can go to the plot of survey, You can see, you know, there are actually five lots in all in different configurations up there. Let me quickly show you. Two, three, four, five. So what, and they were just irregular in shape. What we're doing is we're just cleaning it up, making Lot 1, as was indicated, 2.2 acres. Lot 2 would be a larger 5.7, and Lot 3 would be a 2.5 acre lot. As Damari indicated, we do have a prospect, and Lot 1 is under contract based on us getting approval from the city on the subdivision. So there's really no change until your types of usages, it's just getting the subdivision and getting the lots and the configuration that's more saleable at this time.
Okay, thank you. Before you take your seat, Commissioner Valdez, you have questions for this gentleman?
No questions.
Commissioner Migala.
None for me.
Commissioner Jones.
No, thank you.
And Commissioner Abou Ali.
No, thank you.
I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, staff is walking over to grab the sign-in sheet here, so we'll give a moment to pause. All right, doesn't look like anyone signed up for this petition, but as promised, we'll open it up for public hearing. So anyone want to come up and tell us your thoughts? Now's your opportunity. All right, doesn't look like anyone's moving this way, so we will close the public hearing portion and look to staff for final thoughts.
No final thoughts. This, again, is the application for preliminary and final plot of subdivision. Staff recommends approval, subject to conditions in the packet.
Excellent. So then, at this point in time, the Chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 29-22.
Chairman Cox, I recommend we approve petition number 29-22, subject to the conditions outlined in staff's report, and adopt as our findings of facts those proposed findings of facts outlined in staff's report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, staff, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Migala.
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez.
Yes.
Commissioner Abou Ali.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
And Chairman Cox.
Yes.
The motion is approved, 5 to 0.
That'd be a recommendation, City Council. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item G, since in the efficiency we skipped 2F before, we'll now skip F and move on to the next petition for 52, or 526 Dundee Avenue.
All right, and for the record, we do have proof of proper notice from this petition.
Thank you.
So this second petition before you is the application by Maria Zavala, as applicant and property owner, requesting a conditional use to permit accessory package liquor sales as part of the proposed convenience food store at the property commonly known as 526 Dundee Avenue, Suite B. And we'll start with the aerial map again, the subject property outlined in dotted red line. This property is approximately 13,475 square feet in area. As you can see, it is on the west side of Dundee Avenue, the northwest corner of Dundee and Plum Court, which is just north of the intersection of Summit Street. The property is improved with a 2,500-square-foot, one-story commercial building. It includes a parking lot with 13 parking spaces and a single-family home that was converted to two residential units. As you can see, the properties to the north and east have the same zoning classification, R B, Residence Business. Those properties are improved, single-family homes. The properties adjacent to the west are Zone R C 3, Residence Conservation, and those are as well improved, single-family homes. And then to the south is the A B Area Business Zone property, that is the C V S Drug Store. Here's a bird's eye view of the subject property. The one-story commercial building, as you can see, is at the hard corner of Dundee and Plum Court. The access to the property off Dundee Avenue, the driveway, is a one-way entrance, westbound. And then the exit from the parking lot is on the west side of the commercial building onto Plum Court. So the applicant is proposing to open a convenience food store, which is a permitted use in the R B Residence Business District, and they are requesting approval of conditional use to be able to sell accessory package liquor as part of that convenience food store. The area outlined in blue is the existing tenant space within the building, that is, Zavala Enterprises, which is a financial services office use. And then the proposed convenience store would take approximately 1,300 square feet on the west end of the building that is known as the Suite B. The convenience store would sell the typical small household items that are associated with convenience stores. They would also sell lottery tickets, tobacco products, and are also requesting approval to sell beer, wine, and hard liquor. The display for the alcohol products would be less than 10% of the floor area, so that it is accessory. That would be approximately 96 square feet of the 1,300-square-foot store. The applicant will have to obtain a liquor license if the zoning approval is granted. They are not requesting approval of any onsite consumption of alcohol, and they would not be permitted to sell individual packages of beer and beverages that are less than 75 milliliters. Their proposed hours of operation would be seven days a week, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Here are a couple images of the existing property. The one on the right is the view from Dundee Avenue with the entrance. And then lower left is the location of this tenant space on the western of the building. The subject property with the two commercial tenants and the residential building with two units is required to have 13 parking spaces. The existing parking lot does have exactly 13 spaces, so the property will remain compliant with the zoning requirement for parking. The proposal is required to meet the standards for conditional use. We provided our overview of the standards in the packet. Staff believes that all applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here, and they can address the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Migala, questions for staff?
Damir, I just want more information as to why you think this proposed location for a liquor store is suitable, given the characteristics of the surrounding community?
It is located along Area Business District, or I should say, along an arterial road, Dundee Avenue. Immediately to the south is the C V S Drug Store, is a typical commercial business. All commercial tenants along Dundee generally, but residential uses that are adjacent to those. We have several gas stations that have accessory package liquor licenses. So in essence, this convenience store is really no different than other convenience stores at the gas stations. And so, you know, the sale of alcohol is certainly appropriate, and the zoning ordinance classifies that, you know, as conditional use, so it is deemed appropriate, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jones.
I know C V S sells beer and wine. Do they sell hard liquor, too?
I do not know that, I'm sorry.
I don't know either, okay.
They do.
They do, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Valdez.
I have a question. So the 13 spaces, is that for both buildings or per building?
It is for the commercial building and the residential, and the residential use. So it's a fairly small building, 2,300 square feet. They require one parking stall for 250 square feet of floor area, and then we require two parking spaces per dwelling unit. So altogether, they need 13 parking spaces, and they have 13 onsite.
Commissioner Abou Ali.
No questions, thank you.
My only question for staff is, do you know, are these parking stalls meeting the city, you know, if this was seal-coated and restriped, would we have the same number of parking spaces, meaning the sizes and accessible space striping and all that?
It is likely that not all parking stalls have code-required drive aisles that lead to these stalls. So it would be a lawful non-conforming condition, so that can stay as-is until they make some changes or propose other development, then we would try to make compliant. But otherwise, it's fine.
So, yeah, because I was looking at the drive aisle, and it looks like the parallel spots would be kind of tight if this was redone, but if, so if this is, like I said, seal-coated and restriped, it would be allowed to be done in this way?
Correct, yeah. So existing conditions can remain until substantial changes to the site.
Okay, so I just want to, with the number of parking spots we're considering will be for the foreseeable future. All right, that's my only question for staff. All right, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up. And again, tell us your names, spell it, and then tell us your thoughts.
My name is Janey. I'm actually the daughter of Maria Zavala, but it's just language barrier, so it's easier for me to talk. And you went the address of the business, right?
Sure.
Of 526 Dundee Avenue, sorry. So basically, currently, what we do now is, we're a family-owned business, so it's all mother, father, brothers, sisters. We all work there. We do taxes during the tax season, and then off the tax season, we do like wire transfers and we take bill payments. Basically, what we're trying to do is just regain our income. Since COVID and everything happened, we have seen a decrease in our income, and it's causing some issues with trying to keep our business open. We've been there for eight years now, 10 years now, and we want to keep our customers coming. We want to get them back. We want to stay open for our customers. Everyone who comes in, they love us. They love my mom. We help them as much as we can, and we have the customers to come and help us. We just need to add more stuff to make that income come in as well.
Okay, thanks for that. Start with Commissioner Abou Ali, if you have questions.
I don't, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Does the alcohol sales, do you, I guess, from your research, do the alcohol sales, is that what helps make the business balance out for profitability?
Yeah, about most of it, yeah. And also, where we located, there is a lot of residential people around. And I think just because of our hours of operations, those are our proposed hours, obviously, once, if we get approved, we're working on the hours that you guys allow us to have. We've had talked to some of our customers, because they've all got the letter and they've asked us, and we did have got feedback that they're excited for it. It's not just the alcohol, but any household items that they might need, and they don't want to drive to Jules or anywhere else, or if the C V S is closed, we're conveniently there for them. Majority of our customers walk to us, so it's just more convenient for those, especially those who walk over to us.
And do you know by any chance, what are the hours of C V S?
Um, that I'm not too sure about, yeah, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Migala.
Have you had any interest from other tenants or other uses besides this one?
Yeah, so we used to rent, prior to us wanting to open the store, it used to be a farmer's insurance. We used to rent out to them. Even the other side, we used to rent out to them as well. It was just easier for us to kind of just keep it to ourselves. Obviously, renting, there's a lot of problems with renting and stuff like that, or they found bigger places that they wanted to move to, so. And then the pandemic happened, so we weren't really offering to rent out the places.
And you guys own the residential unit further down Plum, correct?
Yes, down directly right next to the exit of the parking lot.
Do any miners live in that residential, those residential units?
Um, no, it's just the one adult upstairs. The upstairs is a studio, and then the downstairs is just a couple.
Okay, nothing further, thank you.
Commissioner Valdez.
No, I don't have any questions. I just hope you don't run out of spaces, parking spaces.
The reason, we kind of already know the amount of customers we get per hour during the week. We only get about like two customers per hour with our money transferring wire side and a bill payment. And our tax season, that's seasonal, it's only like a couple months. But we've figured out when our customers come in and know that we can make it work. And our other side of the business will close before the convenience store, so.
All right, for Commissioner Jones, I looked it up, the C V S is open from 8 a.m. to 11 p.m., seven days a week.
Okay, thank you.
I think the questions from the commission have been good so far. I just wanted to touch on something maybe a little bit less fun. There's a couple of public comment forms in this packet.
Yeah.
Have you, have you seen those?
We have, yeah.
Would you like to respond to either one of them?
Yeah, so like I said, I know one of them was, are people who are walking by bystanders. Majority of our customers, about 50 to 60% of our customers, walk to us. A lot of them are older customers, so most of them take buses and walk, or just walk from their house. We service the area, so everyone who lives in the area, majority of them come to us. Majority of them walk to us. So I, as far as, I know that was an issue with them. Traffic-wise, we've been there, like I said, for nine, 10 years. We haven't had any accidents directly involving our business, people trying to get into our business or walking or driving out of our business. We haven't had any accidents like that, any accidents with bystanders. And that's pretty much, sorry.
No, it's good. It sounds like some of that would be out of your control anyway.
Yeah.
But my, like I said, just want to give the opportunity to respond to either one of these comments, forms that we received. All right, that's all I had for you, so thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone here now who would like to come up and tell your thoughts, we will open up the public hearing portion of this petition. All right, seeing a lot of furtive glances, we'll close the public hearing portion and look to staff for final comments.
Nothing further to add. I would just clarify again, the convenience store is a by right permitted use, and they can open up and operate whenever they wish. The sale of alcohol is what's requiring the conditional use request. So staff has provided our overview of that request in the staff report, and we believe that the application meets the standards for approval. So staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet.
Thank you for that follow-on. All right, so at this point in time, then, the Chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 19-22- All right, so at this point in time, then the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is nineteen dash twenty-two.
I move to recommend that City Council approve petition nineteen dash twenty-two, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet and to adopt as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided in our packet.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, five to zero.
All right, thank you. That's our recommendation to City Council, thanks for coming tonight. All right, moving on to the next conditional use, which is for twenty-eight Tyler Creek Plaza, petition twenty-five dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. Yeah, so for this one, we, late last week, we received a request for continuance. This is an application for conditional use to establish a commercial event space at twenty-eight Tyler Creek Plaza, which is part of the Tyler Creek Plaza Shopping Center at the northeast corner of McLean and Big Timber. And apparently, there's a private covenant that somewhat regulates what type of uses can establish there, so it's something that's out of the city's hands. And so they, the applicant has requested some additional time to discuss those requirements and restrictions with the other owners who are part of the same shopping center. So we do not object for their request for the continuance and so staff does recommend that the commission continue this to the next planning and zoning commission meeting on August first, which is at 7:00 PM again.
All right, well, we certainly want to give them the time to get their items together. So at this point in time, then the chair will entertain a motion for this petition twenty-five dash twenty-two to be continued to August first, twenty twenty-two.
I move to continue petition twenty-five dash twenty-two to August first.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, five to zero. And I anticipate this will be then scheduled for the next meeting unless they request another continuance, in which case, we would have this on the agenda again and then we would have to continue it again, so.
Understood. Thanks for working with the petitioners to make this a good process. We are moving right along, so we will move on to the next item, which is a planned development as a conditional use for one fifty-five South Randall Road, petition thirty-seven dash twenty-one.
All right, and again, we do have proof of proper notice on this one as well. So the next application before you is the application by OR One Incorporated as applicant and Castle Investments Properties LLC as property owner, who are requesting approval of planned development as a conditional use with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code to allow the construction of a twelve-foot-high solid fence and the installation of a third wall graphic for Old Republic Kitchen and Bar at the property commonly known as one fifty-five South Randall Road. So we will start with the area map, just to get our bearings. The restaurant, Old Kitchen and, excuse me, Old Republic Kitchen and Bar is located on the east side of Randall Road, near the intersection of Randall and Weld Road, that's just south of Route twenty. This is a one-point-four-seven acres property that is zone AB area business district. It is approved with a five-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot restaurant building. The site also includes ninety parking spaces. As you can see, the properties on all sides are also zone AB area business district. To the north is the Applebee's Restaurant, as well as the Elgin Cinema Theater Complex. To the south is the Aldi Grocery Store and a couple restaurants along Randall. To the west is the one-story office building that is home to an optometrist's office. And then to the east are a couple commercial buildings, one that is approved with a Valvoline Motor Vehicle Repair Shop, and then the other that is home to a laundromat and a dance school, dance academy. Here's the bird's-eye view of the subject property looking north. As you can see, the property does not have direct access to Randall Road. Instead, the access to the property is from the extension of Weld Road, that is this road to the south, and then Randall Lake Crossing, which is the road to the west. Those are private roads, part of this shopping area. The restaurant includes an outdoor patio that is south of the restaurant building. This was constructed, and I want to say in twenty-twenty. And the outdoor seating area includes a couple pergolas. There are also two shipping containers, one of which was converted to be an outdoor bar and then also has outdoor seating on top of the container. The other container on the east end of the outdoor seating area was converted to storage and then also seating on the roof of that container. There's also, this is, these are the views of the shipping container along the south, south side of the property that has the seating on top of it, as you can see, covered with the roof. And then these are the images of the outdoor seating area, one from the west and one from the east. The outdoor patio also includes a stage for live performances. The restaurant currently plays live music and recorded music as accessory to the restaurant and that will not change, that's going to remain accessory to the restaurant. So the applicant is requesting approval of planned development to be able to install a twelve-foot-high fence and a third wall sign on the building. The fence indicated here in red, that would essentially enclose the outdoor patio, is a result of an acoustical study that was commissioned by the applicant. The study is a response to noise complaints that the city has received from neighboring residents that live to the east and southeast of the restaurant due to the playing of live and recorded music on the outdoor patio. The study was part of your packet and ultimately recommends that the applicant install a twelve-foot-high wall or a fence along the southeast area of the patio to essentially obstruct that noise going towards the east and southeast. The study also recommends that the speakers, which are part of the stage, be lowered to be below the top of the fence and then also, obviously, to monitor the sound level at the patio. So in response, the applicant has requested this, the application, the approval of the planned development to be able to install this twelve-foot-high fence, which would be cedar solid fence that would match the cedar pergolas that are part of the outdoor patio. The applicant would also install, had agreed to install, twenty-six evergreen trees on the exterior of the fence, just to soften the look of that fence onto the adjacent properties and the pass-by. The applicant will also install uplighting to enhance the look of that fence. The applicant has agreed to lower the speakers down below the top of the fence and they've obviously agreed to monitor the sound levels on the patio as well. The restaurant will still have to comply with the city's noise ordinance. Just a reminder, that noise ordinance is written in such way that it's about measuring the noise levels of the adjacent or nearby residential properties. And those sound levels that are allowed on the residential properties cannot exceed fifty-five decibels during the daytime hours and then forty-four decibels during the nighttime hours, that is between ten PM and seven AM. So the restaurant will have to comply and continue to comply with those noise restrictions. The third wall sign that the applicant is requesting would be on the south facade of the restaurant building. The restaurant is allowed to have two wall signs, as any other commercial business in the city. They do have two wall signs, they're facing west, facing Randall, and then on the north side of the restaurant building, facing north. The south-facing wall sign would serve to identify the building and the restaurant for any motorists traveling north on that Randall Lake Crossing internal drive aisle. And the proposed sign would obviously match the other signs that are on the building right now. The fifty-seven square foot sign with the other signs on the building would still be far less than what the maximum permitted wall sign surface area is for the building, which is about five-hundred-and-twenty-seven square feet. With the three signs, they would be at exactly three-hundred square feet in signed surface area. So the two, or the proposal includes two elements that require departures from the zoning ordinance. The first one is this wall, the code allows up to a six-foot-high solid fence. They are proposing a twelve-foot-high fence. And then, as I mentioned, the restaurant is allowed two wall graphics, which they already have. They're proposing a third one. The application is required to meet the standards for planned developments and for conditional use. Our overview of the standards is provided in the packet and staff does believe that standards have been satisfied and therefore recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in your packet. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant, the owner of the restaurant, is here, can address the commission.
All right, Commissioner Abwali, do you have questions for staff?
Do you happen to know how tall the actual building is?
Yes, about thirty feet, I believe, that was on one of the plans provided. The restaurant building or the top of the?
The restaurant.
That I do not know. It is, I believe, just slightly over the rooftop of the two shipping containers.
That's it, thank you.
We can always maybe redirect that to the petitioner, see if they know. Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you, Demir.
You're welcome.
Commissioner McGala?
Nothing for the city.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
I don't have any questions for you either, Demir, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we invite the petitioner to come on up now. Again, as before, please state your name, spell it, and give us your address.
My name is Nick Smith, N-I-C-K-S-M-I-T-H, four oh seven Park Avenue, St. Charles. Apologize about my appearance, but I am the chairperson of the Greek Festival in Elgin and we were wrapping things up today, so it was a good weekend, we had a blast up there, if you were able to come up. I am the manager-owner with, well, my parents of the Old Republic. We are the landlords by another corporation as well. To answer your question, if you'd like me to just, there's, Lone Star had arcs. If you notice in the pictures, there's, the actual roof of the building is a lot smaller than what the...
Manser roof?
We, it's about twenty-four feet tall, so, at its peak. The containers are, this blue container is actually turned on its side, it's twenty feet tall. So it's a shipping container, we just turned it on its side. And the stage is roughly sixteen feet tall. We already preemptively lowered the speakers as well, per the study, to see if that would also help during the summer. I'm sure, as most people can understand, getting to this point of having this study done and needing all the variables to line up as far as music, finding acoustical engineer, I'm still trying to get my house finished. And so it has been remarkable sometimes, when you're trying to get something done in the world that we're in, it takes a little bit of time. So this is not necessarily a new problem, but it is something that we've been trying to address since with Demir and the city of Elgin, probably since, I'd say, last summer, maybe. Two thousand twenty, it was kind of like the wild, wild west in the sense that it was kind of a brand-new experience for people as an accessory to the restaurant and bar, having live entertainment out there at the Old Republic. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, well, we wanted to make sure that you had your opportunity to present anything you wanted first, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the truth is, the view that this fence is actually, I'm kind of an aesthetic, I want things to be really nice, if you've ever been in the Old Republic. I think you probably get a sense that there's some pride in actually doing things the right way and using nice materials and whatnot. And so when it was presented that a fence would actually help us become more code-compliant with our live entertainment, the nice thing for people that are at least patrons is that the view that this fence obstructs is not a very slightly view at all. It is of the post office and it is a chain-link fence. And then on the other side, of course, and I brought a larger one if this was harder to see. I do think, if you look at the pictures that Demir presented, I actually think aesthetically it looks really nice. I think it kind of buttons up the property in a nice, nice way in terms of it going from the corrugated metal or the steel metal with cedar wood that we have for the rest of the property and whatnot. I think that the height of the fence, as recommended by Dr. Tom Thunder, is nice. I think if it was any taller, it would be almost like this monolithic thing that even if you were on the road or if you were in the restaurant, it would feel like, it would feel, I think, kind of intrusive to your experience. It would be like this gigantic, you know, structure. Even though the containers are big, they're open, they don't feel so as obtrusive or whatnot. I'd like to give you some numbers, and this is a testament to the city of Elgin and Demir and a lot of people that have helped the Old Republic. In two thousand and nineteen, the Old Republic, which was opened in two thousand and eighteen, so this is our second year, we had sales of two million one-hundred-ninety-eight thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. That was about seventy-one thousand dollars paid in tax, sales tax. And our payroll for the year was five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars, and we had about thirty employees. In two thousand and twenty, we had sales of two-point-eight million dollars. We paid about ninety thousand dollars in taxes. Our payroll went up to seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars and we now have, at that time, in two thousand and twenty, we had seventy employees. Last year, in two thousand and twenty-one, we had sales of four-point-five million dollars. We paid a sales tax of ninety-seven thousand. Our payroll went up to nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars and we have employed ninety-five people. So I only say that not as a pat on the back, but to tell that as we have transformed this property, we've transformed, I think, something great on that corridor as part of the city of Elgin. And it's really neat, from a sense of pride, to see realtors now listing and saying, you're minutes away from Old Republic, let's buy this house, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that you know you've made it if you're suddenly listed as part of a feature of selling a house online or something like that. So I only give you these numbers to give you an idea of, well, what happened? You know, what, if this was just a restaurant on a Lone Star, that's kind of what we've been up to in the last couple of years. And the biggest reason we need this fence, and I think Demir, if he wanted to, could comment on this, is that we enclosed this patio in the winter, we have an igloo, so half the patio has a tent over it. We have a secondary stage and musicians bring their own PA system, which is actually, you know, it changes on a weekly basis, they all have different sound systems, they all have different sounds, they have different instruments. Well, we assumed, because I'm usually a logic-based person, that with this tent covering things last year, that the sound problem would go away. Hey, we're in a tent, this will be great. We, you know, we'll kind of be able to work on this application during the winter, present in January and figure out what our possible solutions are. What I did not realize, because I'm not Dr. Thunder and I don't think anybody realizes, is that when it is cold and it is winter, sound travels a lot differently than it does in the summer. And so the tent did not help, it actually made things worse, a lot worse, as far as if you're being out of compliant, not the noise, but it just being out of compliant in terms of that cold Christmas view. You ever been out on a cold night, and you've noticed that things sound a little bit differently? It's because sound travels differently at different temperatures. So, the... If you were to ask me and say, "Well, why have entertainment all year?" You know, "Or why cover it with an igloo?" You know, "If you have issues with the sound as far as cold or hot." In 2020, when we decided to do this igloo and keep the restaurant space, the patio, which is essentially from the left of the stage to the, this part, the honest-to-God reason, even though 2020 was a challenging year, and I think I kind of wanted to retire for the winter to Colorado and just say, "I'll see you next season," it was, it was hard to look at the, some of the staff members, including the bartenders, that was their jobs. And if we didn't have that bar out there, which we attached to the igloo, and of course, have music and whatnot, I don't know. It was a... I've been doing this since 1999, and, yeah, I've always felt a sense of responsibility to employees, but I never had, it never had kind of resonated so much during that year when they just kind of looked at me and they were just scared. And I realized at that point that I was actually responsible for their family and their bills. Before, it was just, even though I was there, I just never felt that way. And so, as much as I would have just said, "Patio's closed for the winter. Let's just do inside. This is a great inside restaurant." How do you manage a staff of 95 when, of course, you can see how much staff you need for the outside? How great would it be if we can continue to employ as many people in the wintertime as well, which is what we've, which is what we've done? So, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you for that. We'll look to the commission now for questions for you, sir. Commissioner Valdez, do you have questions for this gentleman?
No, I don't have questions.
Commissioner McGala?
Is anybody here who has a question? I was just curious, did they talk to you about, you know, anything smaller than a 12-foot fence, or is 12-foot kind of the minimum?
They did a really cool actual computer model with our existing system, and based on that computer model, that was what was recommended or advised by us, or by them, to alleviate this. Remember, it wasn't just 12-foot fence. We also, which we've already done, had to lower these... The PA system actually hangs from the roof of the stage, so it's possible that if that wasn't an option, it might have needed to be taller. I'm assuming that. I'm not sure that actually it was the case, but...
Yeah, both recommendations are on the report. All right. Nothing further. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. Greek Fest was phenomenal this weekend. We were there. You guys got blessed with an amazing weekend for the whole darn thing, and it was like a well-oiled machine, the whole event. So, applause to you. And you guys pivoted really well during COVID with your whole operation over there. It was really fascinating to watch. A couple of things that, in the, in our packet, we had some questions from other businesses about visibility and signage.
Yes. I'm glad you brought that up. I got Damir's email on Friday, and of course, I was covered in Greece, and I'm kind of looking at the two responses, one from Mr. Harrington and one from Brett Valvole behind us. I did get a chance today to go to the Old Republic, and what I did, I'm sorry I don't have multiple copies, but I'll give these to you. I, I think Brett, he's a great neighbor. I've gotten along with him ever since we moved on, moved in, along with Mr. Harrington. I think he's slightly, if I were to assume him, because he's a really super-nice guy, and we've always had a good relationship, I think he's slightly confused about visibility of Valvole behind us. And so, what I did was I took some pictures of what I would assume would be normal circumstance of cars traveling on Randall Road and, what's the name of the road in front of us? Well?
The east-west is the Wold Road.
What's north-south?
I believe Randall Lake Crosses.
And then, I very crudely in Photoshop put a, this is what the fence, you know, if you're looking at this exact same view, if you want to look at these, this first view If you were leaving Aldi, this is what you see.
Why don't you pass it around, please?
Can we pass it? Yeah, thanks.
And you'll see the, the Valvole sign with the white, and it has black letters. This is what it would look like with a fence. I'm not saying I had time to actually have this done.
You're not hurt.
It says, "If you look at the height of the fence, as before, at least, the height of the shipping container railing, that's roughly what you're looking at." And then, I did the exact same thing that if you were actually traveling north on that road, and you can see that this will actually help as far as visibility, because the gigantic bush next to our dumpster will be gone. I have not had a chance to talk to him, unfortunately, and I have not had a chance to show him and say, "I think he probably looked at this and said, 'Oh, my God, what is he going to do now?'" I also think in this day and age, we bought a place that's not on Randall Road. We knew that. We paid for it. We said, "Hey." I think in this day and age, if you have a cellphone in your pocket, the visibility thing, I just don't know if, like, hey, I'm driving down Randall Road, oh, there's a Valvole, and I'll stop there, or, hey, there's a restaurant I'll see there. I think as we kind of progress in the future, you know where you're going, you're going to be able to get there. It doesn't quite matter as much if you're on Randall Road or as much. As, as, you know, we've kind of shown that if you become a destination for business, whether it be oil, food, groceries, I think people will find you if you have something that they want. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And thank you very much for sharing those numbers with sales and taxes and stuff. I appreciate that. Thank you for your responses.
I think it can be difficult in your position, why, why and when could one business's numbers be more important than the other? You know, how do you quantify a Valvole having six employees? I don't take that away from, I wouldn't say that they're any less or more important than our business, to be honest with you. I don't know how you quantify that, but I do think, Brett is, he is a nice guy. I wish I had the chance to talk to him, but I was not able to this weekend. And I do think that if he were to look at this a little bit more, you know, unless you disagree looking at those pictures and saying, "I don't, I don't think that there's a visibility issue for Valvole as far as building this fence."
No, I appreciate you reaching out to him directly. Thank you.
Commissioner Abou Ali?
I appreciate you even trying to fix the problem. That's definitely good. And I wouldn't question Dr. Tom Thunder. What a cool name, by the way. But do you have a plan B if this doesn't work? Is there something in the works, or?
The fence?
The whole?
Or if we don't get approval?
Well, no. If this doesn't help the sound?
My next, I think, step would be to make sure that we're obviously still in code-compliant. So, what we did was we shifted our schedule to the detriment of customers and our business this year, unfortunately, since from last year. And I think more than likely, I would then go to petition to change this very antiquated sound decibel, sound system in the city of Elgin. The current system, as you saw in your packet, is actually at 44 decibels. The ambient noise is actually louder than what even the code says. So, it's possibly something to review. That would be my response to that.
All right. And then, your winter plans are, might have to change now as well, since the...
Yeah.
Yeah? Are you still going to have the live entertainment and whatnot, and then just switch things around? Because you were saying it's louder in the winter, right?
Yeah, I think we would, it would be, it would be extremely detrimental to that, 100%. Again, we would look at changing the entertainment schedule as far as it, that 10 o'clock kind of cutoff. But I think that hopefully the residents of the area appreciate that this costs a lot of money, and this is us doing this because we do care. We want to be good members of the community. We want to be good neighbors of everybody. I understand that sound is annoying. Progress can be annoying. And I do truly think that with Dr. Tom Thunder's report, that it will be a tremendous help, kind of, you know, the apartment buildings that are just south of the Old Republic that are adjacent to Burger King, you can't hear anything there. And so, sound is a weird thing. If you, if you look at Dr. Tom Thunder's graphs, it's really strange how sound moves from source, from one source. And it is bizarre that it does reach some of the residents in those townhouses off a nautical way, and nobody else really, it does not really affect, so...
And about how many noise complaints do you get?
He would know better.
Yeah.
I don't get any.
You don't get any? How about, how often is the live entertainment, I guess?
It's like every Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
We do Thursday and Sunday, but that's more acoustical.
Okay.
This, this Friday, we have a touring band from Nashville. We had that same, another Nashville band come up last weekend. So, it's, it is fun to have some really great live entertainment, but it's not our core business. Our core business is being a restaurant, serving good drinks, being, having good service. Now, I'm trying to protect these people. So, and I hope that this, to the city of Elgin, that you're proud of what we've done out there. I don't, I hopefully that when the Old Republic gets brought up in conversation, it is of a positive light and not one of a black eye, so...
No more questions from me.
All right. Thank you so far for what you've presented to us. Did have two, two things. One, we have an additional response form from Breonna Walsh, and I would just quickly read this into record, and if you've seen this yet or not. The only concern I have is, I'm wondering if this 12-foot fence will disrupt the view of my location even more. And I think you've addressed that sufficiently so far. My other question for you is, in the letter from Acoustics Associate, it looks like you're putting an alternate wall together versus the wall that they recommend. Can you tell us why?
Aesthetically, I think that even though there's more maintenance and upkeep with cedar and real wood, I think that cedar and wood is something that you can feel even without feeling it and even just looking at it. The, the plastic that you see on the highway or sometimes on streets, I think is great, and it is lower maintenance, but that's not, there's not one part of our establishment that would even feel anything like that. There's not, you know, if we're, if it's a shipping container, we took the doors off, and that's the bar phase. You know what I mean? So, it just seemed from, with the pergolas that we already have, as far as them being cedar and whatnot, we kind of like to stay with that. Also, surprisingly, it is incredibly expensive.
So, I guess my second question to that is, being that this is a natural material, you'll maintain it in a way that keeps the sound properties that's required if we approve this?
That's right.
Okay.
It will, it will be maintained in conjunction with the rest of the property.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for you. So, you can take a seat. Thank you for coming.
You going to keep those?
We do have to, yeah. Chairman Cox, if I may share, we had the same question about the, the nature of the design of the fence versus the wall that was called out in the acoustical study. And then, the, the acoustical consultant provided a subsequent letter that went into further detail about what's proposed and how that will, you know, you know, contain the sound. And the good thing about this fence is that it's essentially a double-sided fence that will have overlapping slats, so there will be no gaps in the fence. And according to the acoustical engineer, it will do more than what the wall that was recommended would do.
That's actually the document that I was looking at when I was asking the questions, and that's what led me to say, "Hey, down the road, 10, 15 years down the road, or however fast the material will change, especially when we have board-on-board and you have moisture buildup and insects and whatever else, will, will this be maintained to meet that 3.8 pounds per square foot, which Dr. Thunder referenced?" So, I'm glad staff asked that question as well. All right. So, at this point in time, we will open this petition up to public comment, and staff's going over to get the sign-in sheet, so we always start with that first. All right. No one's signed up on that, so we'll take the opportunity, for those of you sitting in the council chambers, if you'd like to comment, now is your opportunity. All right. This time, I'm seeing smiles and head shakes, so getting a little bit better as the night goes. We will close the public hearing portion into this petition and look to staff for any closing comments.
I don't think we have anything else to add. Again, application for planned development and conditional use. With these two departures for the taller-than-allowed fence and the third wall graphic facing south, staff recommends approval, subject to conditions in the packet.
Okay. So, then, at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion for petition 37-21.
Chairman Cox, I recommend we approve petition 37-21, subject to the findings, or subject to the conditions in our report from staff, and deductive findings affect, those findings affect proposed in staff's report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second. Nancy and I second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Abou Ali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 5-2-0.
All right. Thank you. We'll pass our recommendation on to city council. All right. Last petition on the agenda tonight, actually, there's three petition numbers for it, for which, since it's the last petition, we're going to make the assumption that the 10 or 12 people who maybe just left were here for that petition. We're running a little bit longer here to get through some of these items, but we've got 23-22, 24-22, and 30-22, for which we'll look to staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. And again, we do have proof of proper notice on this last one as well.
Thank you.
So, this last petition is the application by John Cronin as applicant and Association for Individual Development, or AID, as the property owner, who are requesting approval of a preliminary and final plat of subdivision, conditional use for two residential care facilities, and planned development as a map amendment with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code to be able to construct a new development with three buildings, a total of 74 residential units, and one two-story residential care facility, excuse me, office building as a community service center of all of the property commonly known as 695 South State Street. Okay. So, we will start with the area map again, this time, again, subject property outline in red. So, this is a 16.8 acres property that is located on the east side of State Street, which is also known as Route 31, which is under IDOT jurisdiction. This is just south of the intersection of Route 31 and US Highway 20. The property is approved with a 3,000-square-foot, one-story building, and a parking lot includes 10 parking spaces. As you can see, most of the site is generally wooded area and vacant land. As you can see, most of the site is generally wooded area and vacant land. All properties on all sides are zoned CF Community Facility District. To the north is the Illinois Secretary of State Office Building, that also includes some other state offices. To the south is the Illinois State Police District Headquarters. To the west, across State Street, is a property that is currently owned by the city of Elgin that used to be part of the Elgin Mental Health Center. And then to the east is the Elgin Shores Park, which is owned by the Forest Preserve, but it is maintained and operated by the city of Elgin. Here's the birdside view of the subject property again. The existing building on the site has its own access to Route 31, and that existing driveway for the Secretary of State facility actually encroaches slightly onto the subject property, and I'll mention that a little bit later. So the applicant is requesting approval of preliminary and final plat of subdivision to be able to subdivide the subject property into five lots. They're also requesting approval of plan development as a map amendment, as I mentioned, to demolish the existing building and construct three new buildings on the site. And then they're requesting a conditional use to be able to establish two residential care facilities. Essentially, two of the three buildings proposed will be these residential care facilities. This is the subdivision that includes five lots. Lots 1, 2, and 3 would be developed with buildings. Lot 4 would serve to contain the proposed stormwater detention facility that would serve the entire subdivision. And then Lot 5 would remain vacant for the time being. This is the proposed development and the master plan for the site. Phase 1 would be the construction of the northwest building, that would be the Lot 1. That is a 29,720-square-foot, two-story building that would have 24 units of permanent supportive housing, that would be one of the two residential care facilities. Phase 2 would be directly below that, on Lot 2. That is a 56,518-three-story residential care facility with 60 parking spaces. That building would be in Phase 2. And then Phase 3 is the northeast corner of the site, on Lot 3. That is the two-story Community Resource Center building that would have 19,392 square feet of floor area. Here's a little bit of a close-up view of the proposed development. So that Phase 1, the northwest building, is also known as the Wildwood Commons, would gain access from the existing shared drive with the Secretary of State facility. As I mentioned, that property, or that drive currently encroaches into the subject property. And before the city issues a building permit for that, for this new development to use or to share that access, the applicant will submit a recorded access easement that would cover that existing shared drive, for which the state of Illinois has already provided preliminary approval for that. That Phase 1, next to the first building, would include also 45 parking spaces. And then Phase 1 would also include the construction of the detention facility that would serve the entire development. Phase 2, the building in the lower left, that, the second residential care facility would also include the construction of this new driveway, and the internal drive with the right-in, right-out access to State Street. That private drive would serve the entire development. It would essentially function as a public street, with a 30-foot-wide pavement, sidewalks on both sides, parkways on both sides, streetlights on both sides, and street trees as well. And then Phase 3 would be the northeast corner of the site, that's the two-story residential care facility, excuse me, Community Resource Center, that would also have 70 some parking This is the floor plan for the first phase. This would be the Wildwood Commons building on Lot 1. This building includes 24 residential units. 21 of those would be one-bedroom units and three are two-bedroom units. The units would range from 637 to 918 square feet in floor area. All units would have their own kitchens and bathrooms. The building would have shared laundry facilities. There would be a community room on the first floor, fitness facilities, and then also a place for caseworkers to assist with the individuals and the residents. The services that would be provided to the residents by AID include daily living and life skill training, mental and health, mental and physical health, counseling, employment training services. And all of these services would be optional to all residents. They would not be required to partake in any of them. These are the elevations of, or I should say, the renderings of the first building. The applicant would be installing two tones of brick on the exterior and then fiber cement panels, as well as aluminum panels that would have a color that resemble wood siding. That, those materials and the architecture would carry to Building 2 and 3 as well. And this is the floor plan for the second building, on Lot 2. This building would have 34 one-bedroom units and 16 two-bedroom units. That's a total of 50 residential units. Same thing, they would range from 637 to 918 square feet in floor area. Overall, that is 74 units between the buildings 1 and 2, and 104 parking spaces, which translates to a 1.42 parking spaces per unit, even though the applicant has indicated that they anticipate approximately 80% of residents would not have, would not own personal vehicles. I mentioned the architecture would be similar. These are the renderings of the second building, and that the same materials would be used on the third building as well. And this is the Community Resource Center, that would be 19,392 square feet. This building would include AID offices for their staff. It would generally serve as the Resource Center for Mental Health. It would include closed-door pharmacy that would provide prescription services to the residents on-site, as well as other AID clientele. And then the building would offer various other space for other social services providers. The proposed development includes several departures, I'll try to summarize real quick. The number of parking spaces, it's two per unit. The total development requires 226 between the two residential care facilities and the two-story office building. They are proposing a total of 175. Staff is very comfortable with this number because approximately 80% of the residents would not have personal vehicles. The setback, zoning ordinance requires a 26-foot setback for the buildings along State Street. They are proposing a 10-foot setback for the Building 1, and then 19 for the Building 2. That is at request of staff to bring the buildings closer to State Street and then put parking behind the buildings, sort of tucked away from the public view. The maximum building floor area for Building 2 slightly goes over that, that is allowed based on the lot size. They can certainly modify that if necessary and increase the lot size that would then allow for larger building floor area. At this point, it's not necessary because it's, all lots are owned by AID. The Building 1 would have a canopy on the north side that would be four feet from the north property line, where the code requires six feet. That still allows for adequate space to provide some landscaping on the perimeter of the outdoor patio, still within the setbacks and on the property line. The vehicle use area interior setback required is six feet. They're proposing two parking lots between Lots 1 and 2 to essentially up to the lot line, so the parking lots are shared between the residents, and one can access from one parking lot to the other. The number of wall signs, so Building 1 is allowed to have one wall sign up to 443 square feet. They are proposing two wall signs. Essentially, one of those is a mural. The city only allows murals downtown, but in this case, this mural would essentially function as a wall sign that is on a panel, on a board, that is adjusted to the building, so it would essentially serve as a wall sign. And with the other sign on the building, that's more than what the code allows. Similarly, Building 2, only one wall sign is allowed that can be up to 95 square feet on the north elevation. The mural proposed on the north side exceeds that, that's 168 square feet. Residential care facilities are required to be licensed by the state of Illinois. However, this type of facility is not required to be licensed, and so the requirement includes a departure for that. This is similar to the other residential care facility that the city has approved, Hanover Landing, that is at 711 East Chicago. That development is currently in permit review. And they also provide a similar type of supportive living housing for the residents. And then finally, the subdivision ordinance requires that all new lots abut or front on public right-of-ways. They have created two lots, Lot 3, where the Community Resource Center would be, and then the detention facility lot, Lot 4, which do not have frontage on public roads. The proposed development is required to meet the standards for map amendments, plan developments, and then for conditional use for the residential care facilities. Staff has provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and staff believes applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant's team is here, and they can address the question.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Awali, do you have questions for staff?
No questions.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, on that state licensing, can you explain that a little further, why they would not be required to have the Illinois state licensing?
To the best of my knowledge, state classifies various types of residential care facilities that provide various types of services. Usually those types of facilities are similar to assisted living facilities, where there's staff that provides residents with assistance with activities of daily living. This type of facility is not going to be like that. Essentially, residents will be renters of the units, but they will have options for these services. So, and there is no 24-hour staff or anything like that that provides assistance with daily living. They will provide various types of services, but only on a per-need basis. They will have to, you know, comply with all other state requirements, just that that one specific requirement, they have to be licensed by the state, like other assisted living facilities, that wouldn't apply in this case. And they can, I'm sure, the representatives from AID can provide more information on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Migala?
Nothing for the city.
I've just got a few questions for you. The, you said staff has requested the buildings get moved towards Route 31. They're still allowing for future improvements and widening of the roadway?
Yes, so they, the applicant has submitted a study, a traffic study to IDOT, and IDOT has indicated that they do have plans for potential widening of 31. The existing right-of-way is very wide, I believe it's over 100 feet, and still accommodates, there's substantial room for further widening if needed. Sounds like IDOT is planning on adding potentially one additional lane in this area that sort of abuts the northern portion of the AID property. But, you know, they're not required to dedicate any additional land for the right-of-way. IDOT has sufficient land within the right-of-way to accommodate whatever widening they need. So, staff usually recommends buildings are along streets to have parking kind of behind the buildings for various other reasons, but in this case, it worked well.
I noticed in the staff conditions, it talked about a tree removal and replacement plan. Can you comment on the tree removal that has happened in the last, what, year, two years? There's a substantial amount of trees have been cut down in there.
On this property?
Mm-hmm.
But that may be a question for the applicant. I'm not aware of that. The city does allow removal of trees that are for good forestry practices, if they're dead, if they're damaged, if they're, you know, there's storms, if they come down and they affect other trees. So, yes, we do issue, you know, tree removal permits regularly. In this case, they will have to submit a tree removal and replacement plan with their landscaping plan at the time of building permit for every phase, for each building. And they will have to meet the requirements of the tree preservation ordinance, which essentially says, you know, if it's a high-quality tree that they're proposing to remove, there's X amount of inches that they have to replace, and then every new tree has to be minimum three inches, and then you kind of add up all that stuff. But the internal drive aisle, or the driveway that's going to be installed for the property will have these street trees, which essentially will probably go towards those replacement trees, because that's not a public street, so it's not required by the subdivision ordinance, it's a private street, so it will work.
Yeah, I have no problem with trees being cut down. I know they die and they get cut down in storms or whatever else, and they can be planted, it's just, that was my observation driving through, that I saw some heads shaking in the audience, so maybe, maybe I just saw a few coming down, it wasn't as much. The other thing that I had a question was about adjacency to the state of Illinois shooting range, and I was just curious if there was any input from staff, and we can also ask the petitioner on the effect of that shooting range on residents or programs or other things that might occur on the site, because I live on the east side of Elgin, and I can hear the range when it's in use.
Really?
Fine, no problem, right? It's part of law enforcement and all that, no worries, but I just was curious.
If they need a 12-foot wall, I think that's what they need.
Yeah, the dirt berm behind them that they shoot into apparently doesn't suffice. I see some heads shaking in the audience, so I was curious, if staff had any comments on that, or if we looked to the petitioners, or...
I will certainly let the applicant, you know, address that if they need to. We are certainly aware of the shooting range at the, you know, state facility to the south of that, this is the facility, I'm trying to circle that right down there. The buildings will be further north. Again, the shooting range is designed such that I think you line up here and then you shoot into the targets that are immediately east of there. There is a wooded area in between, there's also a topography change. We were not troubled by the proximity of the development to that shooting range, considering that it's a, you know, publicly-owned shooting range by state police, so...
Again, I have no problem with it, I was just curious about the adjacency of those things. And I live over by Lord's Park, and I can hear that range, so I'm very certain a few trees and a little topography change will maybe do some muting, but as we know from sound studies, trees don't do anything, right? So...
And in the winter, who knows what happens?
Right. So, I'd like to hear from the applicant, and if it's fine, great. If not, I'd like to maybe have something included in the packet going forward to council, so... And you answered my question about why the frontage road doesn't qualify, it's not a public road, but you said it would function as one, I think, in your presentation.
Correct. Yeah, it's not unusual that, you know, various developments include private drives for access. It's our practice, you know, for the sake of best practices in planning and design, that these public, or private drives essentially function as public streets, that one, traveling down that road would not know that it's a private versus public, so they are required to do sidewalks on both sides, street trees, and streetlights that will match other streetlights throughout the city, so one would not know that it's a private from public.
All right, thanks for letting me grill you here a little at the end, so...
Sure, you're welcome.
All right, at this point in time, we'll open this petition to the applicant's team, so come on up. Again, state your name, spell it, and please tell us your thoughts. If there's anything we've asked thus far as a commission to staff that you'd like to address in your initial comments, we'd love to hear that, too.
Sure. I'm Lori Baker, L-O-R-E-B-A-K-E-R. I'm the president and CEO of the Association for Individual Development, or AID. And we have some slides, which I'm assuming Demira is going to run for us. Just wanted to give you a little basic information about AID and our vision for the property, and then I'll answer the questions that you had specifically about the shooting range and whatever the one before that was, which I've forgotten, but you'll have to remind me. All right, next one. So, our mission is to work with people with disabilities to live in their communities of choice. Next slide, please. This is a list of the variety of services that we provide. I think many people associate AID with serving people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, but we've also been a community mental health center since 1981 and provide services to people with mental health diagnoses, as well as provide crisis services for people in mental health or other crises, and work with police departments. in mental health or other crises, and work with police departments and other law enforcement in order to provide victim services and other supports. This is our service area, we're in about seven counties. We're across Kane, Kendall, DeKalb, McHenry, Northwestern, Cook, Western DuPage, and a small sliver of Will County, because Aurora is in four counties, so that's about all we do. Next, please. All right, these are our residential locations, and Demir, you can go to the next slide. These are our victim services locations. So what I think we do best at the Association for Individual Development is support people with disabilities to live and work in their communities. In fiscal year '21, we supported 325 people with community day services and employment services, and in fiscal year '21, we supported 1,327 people in community living across our seven-county area. So we're very well-versed and partner with a lot of housing, affordable housing developers, housing authorities, as well as within properties that we own and manage ourselves. This 16-acre-plus parcel, we've had since 1979, 1980, so 40-plus years, and basically that house has been the only thing that has been there, and there are some services that have been delivered from there over the years. I think RIN Center and Eckers Center, and then AID, all had services that were provided out of that home. We're still doing some mental health services and employment services there, but it obviously will be much better suited for the plans that we have for it right now. So, as we began to look at developing this property, we realized that there was great potential after working with our friends at the Elgin Human Services Council, our current clients, our street outreach team, the Kane County Continuum of Care, Kane County Elgin Home Commission, Kane County Development and Community Services, and our staff, who all are searching for affordable housing in a market that has a less than 1% vacancy rate. We realized that we could help both our clients and our staff to be able to live in their communities of choice with the support that they need. As you noticed, everybody had to go home so that they could take their medications and get ready for bed, because it's getting later, but they were here in support, and those were all Elgin residents who live in a variety of our group homes or community-integrated living arrangements in Elgin proper here. Our goal with the 24-unit permanent supportive housing is to serve people with disabilities, people experiencing or at risk of homelessness, veterans, and people who are at risk of or unnecessarily institutionalized in skilled nursing facilities. That was the question. So, we don't have to be licensed in the same way a skilled nursing facility has to, because these are individual homes and apartments that are, just like you or I would sign a lease, have rights of tenancy, and at least we do have to be certified to be able to deliver Medicaid services and bill out of those locations, so, you know, all the kinds of inspections around, you know, fire, safety, you know, ensuring that everything is correct all have to be met, and they'll have to be certified for us to be able to bill and deliver Medicaid eligible services out of both properties, well, all three actually, all together. Then we applied for a 50-unit Longcom Housing Tax Credit building, which has a small set aside of supportive housing in it, but also is our units that would be eligible for 60% or below of area median income, which is many, many, many people in our community that fit into. St. Charles schoolteacher does not make the housing wage to live in Kane County when they start out, for example, so there are a lot of people that are eligible for affordable housing, including the people that we serve and the people that work for us, so we're really thinking of it as affordable workforce housing, along with a few more units of permanent supportive housing for the people that we serve. I love the winter garden portion, I don't know if you noticed the glassy portion, so you could look out, because we're very much true to the name, the Wildwoods want to keep the good wood that is there, which is not all of it, and we haven't, I haven't, told anyone to cut anything down, so I don't think that we have done intentionally any kind of removal, except for, you know, along the edge of the road in order for people to be able to see as they're driving by and do our regular grass cutting and all that. We have had a tree study, and there are some trees that are scrub, you know, and not really worth anything, and then there are good trees, and our intention is to, you know, keep it a wooded area, and that helps as a buffer between that shooting range and the homes that are in the far northern part of the county. Finally, the community building will be a community mental health center and be able to provide greater access to the residents of Elgin, to mental health care, as well as having that closed-door pharmacy, Genoa Healthcare. We work with them in McHenry County and in Aurora in order to make it easier for people to access their medications, have that pharmacist be a part of the team, so that if there are any interactions or problems that are being caused by the medication, they can work directly with the prescribers that are on-site and be a part of that team, help package and make it easier for people to pick up their medications while they're receiving services. It is not someplace like a Walgreens or a CVS, that's why it's called a closed-door pharmacy, it's just for people that are utilizing services at that building and within the AID kind of northern area that we serve. In that building, we also have our employment services for the northern portion of Kane County. We will also have our finance and resource development offices, as well as office space for neighborhood meetings. We'd like to be a really good neighbor, we'd like for there to be the opportunity to use the conference rooms and other spaces that we have in that community building, so for book clubs, 12-step groups, community meetings, and for other not-for-profits, to be able to have a landing space and/or provide services there, or stop in and be able to do some notes and, you know, have access to a space as well. That, I believe, answers most of the questions that you had a moment ago, and I'd be happy to answer any more, and then we have people that can now show you all the pretty designs of the building and all the things that we have written into the plan. Do you want me to answer first?
Why don't you go ahead and finish the presentation, and then we'll go to the questions last.
Hi, good evening. My name's John Cronin, I'm with North Arrow Partners. We are a developed design-build firm, we're located in Villa Park, and we have the great fortune of working with Lori Baker and AID to work on this site, which we think has such a lot of promise, and we're excited about what we can build together with AID and in the community of Elgin. So, I know that Demir was very thorough and went through a number of things, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. I want to introduce just people that are here that can comment on things more specifically if need be. I have Mariela Martinez, she's a project architect, she's also with North Arrow Partners. And then I have Ben Busman from Webster McGrath Alberg, he's a civil engineer and landscape engineer. I have Javier Milan, he's from KLOA, the traffic study engineer. And I have Steve Friedland with Applegate Thorn Thompson, his attorneys for our development group. So we, if there's any specific questions about that, any aspect of it, I think everybody, we got the basis covered, I believe. But I would like to just, if there's, I think we have a rendering that we'd like to show, and Mariela's here to talk about some of the aesthetics and what we, our vision for what we have here.
Yes, hi. My name is Mariela Martinez, and I'm with North Arrow, as John just mentioned it. This is a rendering view from, coming from state, south, north, sorry, the existing DMV Avenue and turning, this is South State coming south, and Phase One, which is the two-story building, 24 units, going ahead for the, to the new build, the Phase Two, which is the three-story building. As you can see, that's the winter garden that Lori was mentioning, that one. And then coming in on the proposed right-in, right-out avenue into the, just with the exclusive access to these two buildings. The parking for these two buildings are in the back, so if we can keep coming, we're coming north now, and that's where, this is a shared parking, this is where the 105 parking spaces are for these two buildings. As you can see, the architecture of both are, it complements one to each other, it's also, the main idea is to propose a more sustainable and green environment, environmental, architectural for the two buildings, and to coexist with the existing landscape and nature. There is no intentions for us to go against that at very opposite, it's more to complement to each other. And not only with the colors, but also with the materials and everything that was selected. The idea is also to be green-certified, to have the enterprise green communities plus-zero certification for one of the buildings, and I guess that's...
Yeah, so a couple other things to make note of, the green certification and the energy efficiency of the two buildings is very important to us, it's important to our lenders, it's important to AID, so that's something that we prize, that we are proud of on this, what we're proposing. In addition to that, you know, of course, with the population of AID, it's a fully accessible building, there's accessibility is, you know, important for both buildings and the site and the community building as well, of course, that's paramount. And a lot of the current accessibility standards, you know, they're, it's, things have changed through the years, so things are better now than they were in the past, and so, you know, oftentimes in communities, there's just a lack of truly fully accessible residential spaces and apartments that are available, so I think that this adds something to the community that might not, might be deficient a little bit to this day. And then last, I also want to make sure that you understand that, you know, we are the, we're the architects and the general contractor, but as the general contractor, we also strive to buy local. We don't self-perform, we are looking to hire local contractors, local material suppliers to assist us in making this a reality, so that's something else that's important to us as well. So any questions that you may have for architecture, for traffic, engineering, or legal?
Landscape.
Landscape, we're happy to answer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess we can say we've wrapped up the bulk of the presentation, you're good with questions now from, all right?
Yes.
All right, appreciate that. We'll start with Commissioner McGala, questions for the team?
What's the basis for requesting over 20% reduction in the parking requirement? I'd like for somebody to answer that.
Sure, we don't need it. The vast majority of people that we serve and in other properties that we have, parking lots are empty, so we see on general about 75% to 80% of the folks that we support not being able to afford to have a vehicle, that's why it's so important that it's right on a main bus route, right, you know, a couple miles away from the main bus terminal downtown here, so that people can have access to the transportation that they need, but, you know, the parking lot will be mostly empty, and nobody wants to waste money on an empty parking lot, so we'd rather put the money in the building for the people that want to have a beautiful place to live.
Nothing further, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. Sounds like a huge project. What kind of, can you tell me about the community outreach you guys have done so far with the neighboring communities, the surrounding areas? There's some real active neighborhood groups in that area.
With which groups? Neighborhood groups? So, we have not done a huge amount with the neighborhood group because it's far across the bridge, but that's part of the reason why we wanted the community designed so that there could be use for those neighborhood groups if they had need of place to be able to hold a meeting or have space. You know, we've worked with a lot of the community providers in the area around need, you know, we've been very involved with, as I said earlier, the Elgin Human Service Council, and, who just recently held an Affordable Housing Summit for Kane County, where they talked about the needs for affordable housing in our communities, so we've done most of our outreach with those types of groups to see what the need is in the community.
The reason I add, there was a proposal for 600 South State Street not too long ago that created a lot of community involvement, so I was surprised not to have seen any of that with this proposal.
Yeah, it's slightly different, it's not, you know, an emergency shelter is a different type of proposal than affordable housing for people with disabilities and our workforce.
Okay. And then, I'm just curious, and maybe this is staff, maybe this is, I'm not sure who this would be, but Elgin, we have an abundance of social services, we're really rich with our social services here. Why? Why is it, you know, I'm just curious.
Well, we've been in Elgin for years.
No, I know you have, and we have so many, we have so many wonderful social services, and I just, that, I hear all the time of other communities bringing their residents and bringing their folks here to Elgin to receive services. So I just want, is it because there is such a heavy concentration here in Elgin?
Well, I think, I think...
You guys have this acreage.
Yeah, I think part of it is the history of giving back of Elgin, I mean, like, it's always been a very generous and supportive community, but, you know, the Elgin Human Service Council really brings together all of those groups, and it really worked through COVID, worked on sharing COVID resources, works on like, you know, spitballing any issue that is happening and how to cover that, so I think that helps too, right? In some communities, there's more competition, I would guess, between folks, and that Elgin Human Service Council really helps to bring people together to work towards the common goal, which we all should be working towards, which is helping the people of Elgin and the surrounding area that need support, so that's my opinion, I don't know, you know, I don't have any research to play that out, but, you know, I think that's not, for example, we're located in Aurora, and there really isn't that type of same group cohesive whole in Aurora, although they're working towards it, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have the food, we have transportation, we have the service, and then do you know Eckers Center used to provide some of that supportive housing? And if I remember correctly, they've eliminated that from some of their services, am I correct in that?
So they haven't totally eliminated, they have some affordable supportive housing properties that are through the Continuum of Care, which works with people experiencing homelessness, and they still have some of those units, but, you know, there's just not enough for the need in the community. And we've been doing street outreach for over a year with COVID ESG funds, and, you know, as you know, there is several encampments and a lot of need in Elgin, and so they have some, but it's usually full, you know, so this would expand and create more options for all of the people that have a need.
Thank you. Thank you for all your answers.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Abuali?
Is this the first of this size, or is Aurora the same kind of adventure?
So this, this was a unique opportunity for us because the property's so large, and you know, you don't necessarily, we're under construction right now with North Arrow in West Chicago on a 24-unit permanent supportive housing project, that the land is just big enough for the 24-unit, and so usually you can't afford to have this large of a piece of land somewhere that actually is close to food and transportation and doctors and employment opportunities and all that, so, you know, we have tried over 40-plus years to do something more with this property, and it just has finally come together at this time, so it just seems really fortuitous, and we're really excited that we have this land to be able to use, right? You know, it's just pretty cool.
Forty years in the making.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, even though they're two floors, they're elevator buildings?
Yeah, they're both elevator buildings.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
All right, well, thanks for what you presented thus far.
Thank you.
I did, was curious if we could circle back to the shooting range conversation, just with the noise, if you're, if you're good with it, that's great, just a question.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's not totally perfect, because we do work with people who have trauma and PTSD and a variety of other things, right, so that's not completely perfect, but with the design and having, the city has really encouraged us to make things on the more the northern end of the property and keep those trees and buffer and nature there, you know, having the design with more soundproof and, you know, not, hopefully, things will be fine, and then we'll work on, you know, the services aspect, because obviously we'll be... And then we'll work on, you know, the services aspect because obviously we'll be have services to deliver to people. But, you know, if that's a concern for anyone who might be interested in the property, we might steer them to another property or see how that works out and be flexible if it really ends up bothering someone with being able to maybe move them somewhere else.
No, I appreciate that. And there were veterans that were mentioned, so you kind of touched on that. And with this came to mind as we approved a project on State Street and Kimball a while back, and the adjacent use was an auto body shop. And he said, hey, you're not going to affect my hours, you're not going to affect my noise, right? And so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't affecting the state police in any, in any way through the.
Yeah, we're not going to ask them to stop, but I'm shooting.
Sounds good. And again, I support the use for you and I support the use for the state of Illinois, just, just the question.
Right, nope, that's a good question.
And actually a quick redirect here to, this building, is this meeting the design guidelines of the city of Elgin with, okay?
With metal exterior, yes, they're less than 25% per elevation.
Okay. Just a general comment, I know architecture and design is subjective, but I find that the one building is pretty austere in the, in the street elevation, especially that it's as close to the roadway as it is. So just some, that was just my, my opinion. So for, if you can look at it, great.
Yeah, I know they worked on, and it's similar to some of the design that we have going on in West Chicago and the different surfaces that are on the building really kind of break that up more than I think it shows really in the picture and make, draw your interest to different heights in the building and does not seem cold when I go out. So hopefully it won't be, but we will keep that in mind as we look at surfaces. Thank you.
I appreciate that. All right, I don't have any other questions for you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all that's been presented here tonight. So we will then now open this up to those of you in the audience who have remained to this point. Appreciate that. Got a couple lists here. If I get your names wrong, I do apologize. But I am going to start with Mr. James Gould.
My name is James Gould, G-O-U-L-D. I have the privilege of serving as the current vice chair of the Board of Trustees of AID, and you just heard Lori and our design team. While I speak for myself, I think my support represents the views of the board as a whole. My son David was one of those who was in this group that left a few minutes ago, and it was wonderful to see his house and many of his friends here. And I thank you for listening to our presentation here tonight. You've heard lots of specs and statistics. I want to remind you not to forget that this is fundamentally a moral issue. It's said that the goodness of a society is judged by how it takes care of its most vulnerable people. And I think the way I would answer the question, why this property and why now, is that it brings together two groups of needy individuals. We're all aware of the need for affordable housing. But beyond affordable housing is the subset of people needing affordable housing that have developmental disabilities or substance abuse challenges or mental health diagnoses. And it's that subset that this, that this facility and this development will meet. And AID, as you've heard, is not only a leader within the county, it's a regional leader in providing these kinds of services. I think the facility that Lori mentioned, Main Street Lofts in, in West Chicago that is currently under construction, really represents that. You know, it strikes me that often in meetings like this, boards like you begin their meetings by taking the Pledge of Allegiance, which of course requires our commitment to do justice for all people. And I appreciate your support for this project and I ask you to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next name on the list is Sue Webb.
Hi, my name is Sue Webb and I'm with Swan, the Southwest Area Neighborhood, which is located on the north side of Route 20. We recently became aware of this issue and one of the reasons was the placement of the sign. And we took a picture. If you're heading south, you can see the sign, but you're worried about traffic when you merge. Everyone has used Route 31. You need to watch when you're merging because we know cars like to go in front and pass. So you do not look to your left. So the sign is not visible, though, going north, going, yeah, going north. South, it's not, it's visible, but you don't look at it. Going north, it is not visible. So I have a picture. As you can see, when it was placed, there was a tree in, a tree.
Sorry, I need you to return to the, so we can get your, get you on the mic. Sorry about that. So please continue.
When you're heading, oh gosh, my husband was the good one with directions. I was the one who just told him where to turn. So anyway, when you're heading north, you cannot see the sign because it was placed in front of a tree. So we recently found out about this. As Ms. Baker stated, they did not communicate with the neighborhood at all. We have our meetings every month. We put up signs every month. We are a no one neighborhood. We really would just like to work something out and have some areas that are gray clarified before this process goes through and goes to the city council. We would like to work with them and let them know the issues that we as a community next door know and are aware of. We would like to know, know some things. We would like to have this tabled until next month so we could discuss this with them and have an open discussion. We really, we really do not know that much, but we do know they are a wonderful organization. And we would like to at least, you know, have some talks with us. She stated that it would be open to neighborhood meetings. Well, that's great, but work with the neighborhood. Please work with us. And the reason they need to work with us a little more is because of the lack of cars. So that is going to cause traffic in, on Route 31 and also in the neighborhood. And we would just like to, you know, have some clarity. So if issues come up, we can go to them and say, hey, you stated this. We also would like to have some deeper conversations about the use of the resource building, that building. We'd like to know what's going to be there, what's going to be, it's just a good thing for us to know, along with our city to know. Because our city is very active in helping. And we have several members of our group that have special need people. And I have a, I have a nephew who has Down syndrome and cannot be placed into a home because there is no availability. So we understand, but we just would like to go ahead and have a conversation with them. Another issue is, you were talking about the gunshots. Oh, we contest that. When we, when we moved in, my husband said, oh, we're going to put the middle line in on the windows. Oh, do I, I can tell you when shots happen, I can tell you when the gun is being used, the gun range is being used, I can tell you about fireworks. But people that now remodel use better windows, so they do not have that big of an issue. And you become accustomed to it. It's, you're not accustomed to fireworks, but you are accustomed to that. And the planes are getting lower too. So they're going to have to put in some very high-tech windows for that aspect. But the other issue we'd like to discuss with them and maybe our city needs to discuss is Route 31 will eventually be linked to a bike trail. Now, is IDOT going to have enough access with that building being that close to place a bike trail on both sides too? You know, I, IDOT does not think ahead. We as a city have to think ahead for them and question them. So with that, I just ask that you suggest that they contact our neighborhood and we have a discussion with them before it goes to council. So with that, I thank you for listening to me.
Thanks for coming. All right, moving to the, the next list. I believe there's a person with us whose name is Clifford.
I have no comment. I'm chairman of the Board of AID.
Sounds good.
Hi, my name is Edward Manning, M-A-N-N-I-N-G. I reside in Geneva and I'm a leader with the Fox River Valley Initiative. The Fox River Valley Initiative is a broad-based organizing group that consists of 20 member institutions up and down the Fox River in Kane County. We consist of churches, affordable housing developers, homeless shelters, teachers, associations, and social service organizations. Six leaders from various of member institutions of the FRVI are here tonight, including three from Elgin. In May of 2019, the Elgin City Council unanimously passed and approved the 1212 Larkin Housing Development on the west side of Elgin. That development is 48 units and is currently fully rented with a waiting list of over 200 families and individuals to get in there. The need for affordable supportive housing in Kane County is great and we applaud Elgin for their, for their passing and their allowing of the 1212 Larkin Development. And we fully support AID and urge you guys to pass this along to the full city council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next we have Debbie McGuire.
Can you read a spell my name?
Sure.
D-E-B-B-I-E McGuire, M-C-G-U-I-R-E. I'm from Pingree Grove, but I do have a son with mental health issues, being served in Elgin for over 15 years. As a family member, I got to say, I struggle with trying to find housing, affordable housing for him. Looked at the housing in South Elgin, was told there was a three-year wait. People that, you don't understand when your child is coming into mental health issues that you have to look at this in the beginning phases. The gal from the South Elgin facility suggested to me, would he be interested in going to Gurnee? He lives in Elgin, he receives services in Elgin. You should be housed in Elgin. And I strongly support affordable housing. I'm on the Board of Pads of Elgin. I'm a licensed clinical social worker with 45 years of mental health experience. We need more housing and we need to be able to help the individuals of Elgin. Any questions? Thank you.
Do we, we've got Ruth, I can't quite read the last name. Is that a name? Was someone with us tonight? Ruth?
I just thought I was supposed to sign in. I didn't have to support you.
Nope. Sounds good, thank you.
I guess I messed up. Didn't want to shine in the changing room.
All good. Just, it was an opportunity, if you wanted to speak, you could, you could come on up and do so. And then I'm guessing Joe would be the same. Okay. All right, we've exhausted the sign-in sheets, but there are others who are here tonight. If you would like to, Mr. Bednar, if you'd like to come on up, now's your opportunity. And we'll continue around the room.
My name's Paul Bednar. I'm here as an individual resident. I don't have a family member or anything that might utilize these services, but I do know the importance of what they're trying to do. I love the fact that Elgin does a better job than most communities around here at accommodating these special uses. I'm proud of that fact. And I think what I've seen as far as the presentation tonight goes, I'm very impressed. I'm impressed on a number of levels. First of all, I think it's a very good site for this use. It's long a, a good, well-used bus route. It is able to share a driveway that's already in existence to, you know, save some money and utilize that better. It's removed from all of our neighborhoods, really. It is not in the center of a neighborhood residential area. It's, it's a little bit removed. The design of the building, the design of the site makes sense. And there were a couple of things that I saw tonight that I actually would suggest that the city, yourselves and the developer, might take a look at a little further. And that is actually reducing the amount of parking, reducing the amount of the infrastructure that might be included in this internal street here that only serves this one particular use. I, I'm not sure, as, as a community planner for 40 years and so myself, I'm not sure I see the, the need for that if we can save money by not only, you know, maybe only having one side have a sidewalk and the other side have a bike path. A bike path, I think, is an important amenity to include from State Street in all the way to the property edge so that it can tie into a city park that's located on the river and, and ultimately across the street to what's going to be the sports complex expanded. So I think that's one thing to add in here. And other than that, I'm here to just support this entire idea.
All right, thank you. Anyone else working kind of way around the room here who would like to come on up, maybe in this section? No? And over here? All right, we will close the public hearing portion then of this petition. I guess I, I have a redirect to the petitioner team. And so I will also give the opportunity for the, the commission for the same. Hearing this, this need, why are we two stories and three stories instead of adding floors? We could be adding additional residence spaces. I don't know who would like to answer, is it the architect or, sorry? I don't mean to make you get up again, we need to get you on the mic. Sorry about that, sir.
Can you rephrase your question, not clear exactly?
So what I'm saying is we've heard a lot of support for this project and we've heard that there is a great demand.
There is, yeah.
For housing. So my question to the team is, why are we limiting to the number of floors that we are when adding a floor or two could increase the numbers of?
Part of it is how to pay for it.
Yeah.
So, so you have to, you know, apply for money and this is called lasagna financing for much of this because you got to put all different kinds of financing together. As you know, costs have increased because of the supply chain issues and other things around COVID. And you can, the architect can really talk, you know, developer, but we, you know, have to be competitive with very competitive projects across the state that are trying to get funded. And so, you know, and try not to have too big of a concentration of people in one spot. There's still technically more land, right? You know, so, you know, if you want us to try to apply for more, you know, we would not be averse to it, although we would need to take into account the shooting range, you know, the closer you get to that end of the, the property. But, you know, I mean, we felt like this was a good mix, different heights, not too, doesn't look out of place in the city, you know? There, it is more of a kind of commercial-ish area until you cross the bridge. So, you know, you want to kind of look the same as other things around you and not stand out and be that place where those people live, right? You know, it needs to look like everything else and, and be beautiful. And so that's the main reasons, being able to pay for it really is the biggest, number one reason.
I think that's a good reason. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Just what it was.
Yeah, yeah. This money is very, all, all this type of money is very, very competitive. And I think we've been really blessed because there are some additional funds because of COVID on the federal level that have come into the state and have allowed us to be successful. And, you know, if we get approvals going and get, you know, we're, we're hoping to close both of the housing spaces by, you know, before the end of the year or so, we can start to get in the ground and get things going. So we've got a federal request then for the community building and fund that has gone out. So we've got a federal request in for the community building and that has gone out of the House Subcommittee of Appropriations onto the House Appropriations Committee. So we're hopeful that we'll get the money for that building or at least part of the money for that building. So we just keep paying away. And if you know of any secret places to get money, we will, let us know. We will, we will ask them to. But I think money is the biggest reason in not having too much concentration.
Yeah, I should point out, too, that a lot of our financing that we apply for, which is competitive, is we apply through the Illinois Housing Development Authority. And in some ways, they write some of the rules with regards to scale and part of that's based upon concentration like Lori spoke about. So just so you know, in terms of financing for both Phase 1 and Phase 2, we have been awarded the financing already from IDA for the both buildings. And so we're working towards that. Of course, we need, we need your blessing. So, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Abuali, do you have any additional questions for the team?
Well, I just want to say that I think it's a great project. Based on what one of our members said, I think already you're going to make an effort to reach more out to the neighborhoods and communities. But I also have a lot of confidence in the city of Elgin and in you that I think they took care of most of those issues. And I think that's something that, you know, maybe you would discuss. And just the last thing I want to say, I don't want to shoot a dead horse, but the shooting thing, have you guys, and more, this is just a personal concern, like you said, some of the PTSD, have you done the better windows and the better insulation and things like that in these buildings to kind of avoid some of that?
We have done that in other buildings.
John, could you please get up? Thank you.
Getting your exercise tonight.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, we have. Down the road, when we are submitting plans for permit or to our lenders for their review of it, oftentimes there'll be sound issues. We'll have to, if we're close to a railroad or if there's other issues like that, that there'll be sound studies that we'll do. Not, maybe not Dr. Thomas Thunder, but what we will do, some sound studies of that. And then based on that, we will mitigate that with appropriate, you know, wall construction and window selection and things like that. So yes, we're sensitive to those things and that will certainly factor into it. The shooting range, yeah, I mean, I think that, I think distance is a big part of it. We are, we did make an effort, obviously, working with the mayor to, you know, have the development on the north side. And so we, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of land and buffer in between, but certainly the selection of materials and the wall construction that we, final design of that, we'll take that into account for sure.
And the other thing, and I don't know if Javier wants to say anything, but, you know, that we have to, we had to get, for our application to our funding sources, we had to get information from the Illinois Department of Transportation about what their plans are, you know, as we said, they have plans to, you know, increase the size of 31, which I think we would all welcome, right? And there's still room, you know, within the corridor and the way that it's designed. We really work closely with the city to ensure that we're meeting their design standards and what they'd like to see and how they'd like things to look within the city of Elgin and how, you know, how we make it more interesting with different coverings and other things. So, you know, there's been traffic studies about this traffic flow. Again, I don't think we're going to add a lot of cars to that traffic flow because it's mostly going to be staff members that are working there or supporting the people that would need, you know, the parking spaces. We will not have a lot of people that are able to own their own vehicles. So we have, you know, done all those due diligence items and then worked really closely with the city to address those as well.
All right, thank you for that. Just to make sure we keep this moving along, we'll just try to constrain the answers, please, to follow questions from the commission. So thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Abuali, were you done? Thank you. Commissioner Jones, questions for the team?
Yeah, just one more observation. I hope that you will look into some of those community outreach opportunities. I think you can see just from this meeting that there is a supportive feeling for what you're doing and how you're doing it and that kind of thing in Elgin. So I hope that you'll do a little more community outreach.
Commissioner McGala?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
All right, we appreciate what you have presented and I do appreciate the energy when you tacked on about the IDOT and those other things. But like I said, just to keep things timely in manner, appreciate everyone being here tonight. Unfortunately, we lost as many people as we did who were with us earlier. So just at this point in time, look to staff for any final comments.
I don't think we have, or I, I don't think I have anything else to add. There were some questions about how close these buildings are to State Street. I just want to remind everybody that the existing property line is 50 feet from the curb of State Street. That's 50 feet. So the north building will be an additional 10 feet from that property line. So that's minimum 60 feet from the curb. The one to the south will be even further away. That building is 19 feet from the property line, so that's almost 70 feet from the curb of Route 31. So that, in my personal opinion, it's even too far from the street. And I think once these buildings hopefully are constructed, we will be able to see that these buildings are really too far from the road. They need to be much closer, but that's because the right-of-way is so wide, essentially allows for widening of Route 31 in the future. So that's the whole purpose of that. And there were some questions about additional bike paths and sidewalks. The city obviously requests sidewalks be constructed and as part of the subdivision, they are required. And so the applicant will be installing sidewalks along each lot that they're developing. The sidewalk along Lot 5 will be, along Route 31, will be constructed when that Lot 5 is developed. The sidewalk along Route 31 and then along the shared driveway with Secretary of State facility will be constructed with each phase. So Lot 1 will have a phase from Route 31 to the internal, I guess, drive aisle that goes north-south. And then when Lot 3 is developed, sidewalk will be constructed going further east to provide access to the park. So those things are provided. I don't think I have anything else unless there's any other questions. Staff, we believe that this is a really good development that fits in considering the surroundings. We believe that all applicable standards are satisfied and staff recommends approval subject to the conditions.
Thank you. I believe there was one additional question for you. Commissioner Jones?
Did you want to comment at all about the sign placement on 31 for this that was brought up?
No, nothing, nothing further. You're welcome.
Well, I appreciate all the support that's been here tonight and the, all the questions that we've gone through and everything that's been brought to light. But now comes the time when we will look to the commission to make a motion for this petition. And that is, or petitions, I should say, 23-22, 24-22, and 30-22.
I move to recommend that city council approve petition number 23-22, 24-22, and 30-22, subject to conditions outlined within our packet and to adopt as the findings of the commission. Those findings also provided in our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 5-0.
All right, unanimous. Thanks for coming this evening. All right, moving on to Item H, which is other business. Anyone in the commission have any business to discuss this evening? Hearing none. We can move on to Item I, which is public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on anything tonight except for petition-specific information, now's the opportunity. And I do want to remind everyone, we are still in session. All right, seeing no public comment, moving on to Item J, summary of pending development applications. Look to staff.
So next meeting is August 1st. That's only three weeks. We will have another packed agenda as we're going through the really, really busy time of the year. Couple updates on some of the projects that have gone through city council. The industrial subdivision of the southwest corner of Randall and Route 20, or 72, received unanimous approval by the city council. So the ordinance for approval of that project and the annexation is expected to be scheduled for council either this month or early next month. Starbucks, there's finally some movement on the Starbucks in front of Russo. It looks like that will be scheduled for final city council approval in the very near future. And yeah, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We have another final plat for the next phase in the West Point Gardens, Phase 3. That will be along the west side of Russell Road. So that will be in front of you probably in September. And I think with that, that's all I have.
Any update on the Pingree Creek?
Yeah, it's also entered city council, received unanimous support and approval under consideration. So that, the amendment to that annexation agreement will probably be scheduled in, probably in August. It's not going to happen in July, I don't believe. But that's only for the amendment to the annexation agreement. They still have to do some work to get the final plat approved for those residences and for the first phase. So no update on that part.
All right, any other questions for staff on this pending development applications? Commissioner Jones?
Any update on the junction?
No, unfortunately not.
Did we find out anything about the plywood, all those boarded-up windows or anything?
Nothing new. It's part of the demolition for safety. That's the answer that I got. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? If not, chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abuali?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Chairman Cox?
I will say yes as well.
Motion approved, thanks. We're adjourned.
Thank you.